Good, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you to the March twenty fifth. A special Board of Education meeting with the township. I'm calling this meeting to order at seven oh four P M.
Good evening. On behalf of Township Council, I call to order this special meeting of the run of Township Council for the twenty fifth of March. Twenty twenty five. Shall we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Right for the pledge.
Madam Board President, do you want to? Have Mr. Cruz read the public meeting statements or?
I usually just read it. Thank you. Notice of open public meeting. The notice requirement of the Open Public Meetings Acts have been satisfied with respect to the special joint meeting of the Township Council and the Verona Board of Education. Being held in the auditorium of the Verona High School. Notice of this special meeting was published in the March twenty first, twenty twenty five edition of the Star Ledger. The agenda, along with written notice, was given, giving the time and date. And live stream link was posted in the municipal building and sent to the official newspapers of the township. The Verona Cedar Grove Times and the Star Ledger at least forty eight hours preceding the start time of this meeting. The agenda can be viewed online at the Verona, New Jersey dot org backslash council meetings. A public comment period will be held in the order it is listed in the meeting agenda. The public comment period is available only for those attending in person. And let's do roll call, Mr. Cruz.
Yes. Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Here.
Mrs. Vazella?
Here.
Mr. Boone?
Here.
We have Quorum. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Captain Holland?
Here.
Doctor Winona Grant?
Here.
Second Mayor McAvoy?
Present.
Mayor Demora?
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Just before we go on to new business, I hope everyone doesn't mind. I'll take a little bit out of order. I just want to welcome the mayor, deputy mayor and town council. Vice President Prisco did some research and the last time there was a joint meeting of the Board of Education and the Town Council was on October twenty fourth, twenty sixteen. Given how closely the township and the school district must work to the benefit of the residents of Verona, I would say this meeting is overdue. Although that meeting had a somewhat different setup, there were several topics, including shared services and pilot funds that are still on our agenda. Speaking for the board, we are looking forward to a robust, robust discussion between our two governing bodies. So welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I think the council reflects those statements. I know I do. It is great that everybody can be in one room to go over these issues and really work in furtherance of the needs of the township and our residents and our students.
If we want to move on to our new business. A review of current shared services between the township and Board of Education. I think just to give a little background to the public, the Board of Education and the Township entered into a shared services agreement whereby it, the Board of Education receives some services from the town specifically around maintenance of some facilities, snow removal, general services. And then in from the township, from the Board of Education, the township is permitted to use our facilities for rec department activities and other townwide activities as needed. So, you know, this, this shared services agreement has been in place for, I want to say about a year now. Okay, so a little over a year. So I just thought it'd be a good time to just reflect and see if there's any growing pains or issues that need to be resolved between the, the two groups to see, make sure we keep going forward together.
Thank you. No, Mr. O'Sullivan has been attached administration. I have to look this way to, to see him, to get his eye, but the town administration worked on this with the Mrs. Giuseppe and Mr. Cruz in order to actually document things that have been done for a long time unofficially. And over times, the township has been happy to fill some of the, the needs that are arising out of the having fewer staff on the school end or equipment needs or really not duplicating services. So it's a, it's a wise approach. Mr. O'Sullivan, is there anything that you would like to specifically note related to the shared services agreement that needs to be updated, changed or highlighted?
I think in the new world stuff, we hear about since that time, I think the shared services could be updated. There, there's been a whole ongoing discussion with the Board of Education. The township also has extended the use of, I was like, the tech system and some just recently in the past week, we provided access through our grant writing portal. We were in discussions about potential future shared service agreements. If there's any potential grants out there that would benefit both parties equally. So as we continue to have this discussion, I think it would make sense on a basis, maybe a review and update and add and supplement, including current agreements based on the growing relationship in the board.
Thank you. I don't know if there's anything from Mr. Cruz or Ms. Giuseppe that needs to be addressed.
So we, we definitely appreciate the partnership with the Verona Township, especially the DPW. I think that's one of the components that has helped our building and ground department and the upkeep of the grounds. There are some costs that, that the board does incur when, when it comes to groundkeeping, such as like weeding and, and, and also like there's like hedges and things like that. So we do have, there are, I'm not sure if there's a bandwidth that where the DPW is able to pick that up, but I know that in the past we've that's one area that we weren't able to, we will have to actually contract out since we don't have a grounds crew in, in the board.
The only thing that I would bring up and it was something Mr. O'Sullivan and I spoke about already. So we already have a solution is better communication between the rec department and our, our athletic department. Things get lost in the shuffle sometimes. So we actually, Mr. Volitieri, our facilities director has a Google Calendar set up that has all of the events that are scheduled for the district on that. If we can get Mrs. Paul, Paul Marisi to put all of the athletic or actually her assistant to put all of the athletic events in it and then share it with the rec department and they could put their athletic events in it or recreation events, whether they're athletics or camps or whatever, that would go a long way in fixing any current communication issues, I think. Now, that was a great suggestion. Thank you.
Does anyone have any other comments on that before we move on to the next item? Okay, going to new business two, cooperation between school district and township and distributing important information through both entities mass communication systems. The background of this is just, I think sometimes the people, especially people with kids that may not, that may not be school age yet, might subscribe to the rec department or the township email blast, and they might miss some stuff from the school district that is pertinent to them, you know, regarding preschool registration or kindergarten registration, stuff like that, that you know, I think just making sure that we cooperate together to use both of our communication facilities as, as effectively as possible. And then just to piggyback that, because I was thinking about this as I was going home today, it would be very nice if to kind of expand the Google Calendar idea for rec department to have a townwide calendar of events, school events, town events. If there's even Essex County events that are happening in the park, I mean, I think it was about a little over a year ago, a little less than a year ago. There was a day where there was an event in the Verona Park. There was an event in the horseshoe and there was a vet behind H B W. And that just was, I think, too many events in too little space. So I think if we had a, a calendar or something where we can share and say, oh, wait, the township's having their event this year, this, you know, Tuesday, maybe we'll have hours on the following Tuesday. Just to communicate and coordinate a little better, give people in the community one spot to go to look for various things.
I think if you, I tend to agree that it's a good idea. I know the, the school is a Google based enterprise and so is the, the township. So even if, when the school and the township both have Google calendars, you can actually set up another calendar that incorporates both those calendars in. And it actually requires no additional labor on anybody's part to do that, except set it up the one time. But all the events, I don't, the school additional, your schools have their own calendars and there's a district calendar. So we have to keep adding those layers.
Yeah, I was just going to say the difficulty with the schools is we don't have one person entering onto a calendar. Each school has their own calendar. The district has a calendar, so we could certainly look into streamlining that.
I mean, you can amalgamate all of those into one. We could populate a central Google calendar. What's that?
I said a couple of them are blank.
Oh, well, that, that is, well, it just leaves us to guess. It's good. And I know with some of the county events, if there's stuff happening in Verona, our P I O, Lisa might be able to update our calendar with that or our municipal clerk and Ms. Kirin to add those things in as a separate, like a county calendar. And when you can, I have like ninety Google calendars and they all appear on one item. And if we do that, that might be an easy way without adding labor for anybody, but we can just get our tech folks talking and, and get that all set up. That should be a relatively labor on intensive project, Mr. O'Sullivan, right?
We certainly have a discussion. I know the township was launching a website with a number of different calendars based on a website. You can follow different calendars on them. Also, you can look at a way to carry in and pull in different calendars and have them on also. We can publicize an opportunity to use multiple calendars in one spot.
The district is also moving to a new website host provider. So if we could just make, wait till we get that set up so we don't have to set it up twice. Thanks.
I'd like to add a layer to this communication piece as well. From the emergency management perspective for the township, we don't have, we have Alert Verona, which is the rave system where we put on emergency alerts. Not everybody is on there. And that does create some issues when we have things like a water main break, a boil water advisory, a large incident happening in town. And I know that the school district has through parent square has access to a lot of things, but I'm wondering if between the emergency management office and the township and the school district, we might be able to develop a way where the, either the township could have, you know, emergent access to that portal to send out emergent update if we need to get something out like, you know, shelter in place to everybody in town. Or so direct access or a somebody who was, you know, has that access to our alert Verona that if they see something that is of an urgent nature to be able to piggyback that out onto the, the school five system and get that information out right away. And we'd be potentially reaching more people in an emergency. The schools actually might have more users on your system than we do potentially.
Yeah, but likely. So we're actually moving away from parent squares well because our new web host provider will provide something that's almost identical to parent square. But I believe we could provide a user, a user account for the, someone at the township.
Yeah, and that way if it's Lisa or Joel or whoever, and that way we can, you know, we just put a disclaimer on the bottom. This communication is being sent by Township of Verona and then people know it's not Diane telling people to shelter in place.
Yeah, it's, yeah. I mean, I don't know how it's, it's the new system with the, with the system that we have now, just to drop down and introduce who's sending.
Oh, that's easy enough.
Yeah.
There's just something to add to keep everybody, everybody safe in that time. Now, the other thing is, is that the, the township has our newsletter that does have a lot of subscribers. And that the Board of Ed should consider things for, that you're trying to publicize, especially kindergarten registration, things like that to get that information out to Elisa to put out to the general public as well, even if we had a she'll send stuff out on demand if we have to, but there's also a regular schedule for these things. To be able to get that information out and that we can add and, and reach that, that's not a, as heavy a lift either to do.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments?
Communication.
Okay. Moving on to item number three, Verona Flats. So it's open and people are moving in, which is great. I believe we have about twenty new students in the district, which we welcome and we're very excited to have them join us. However, we, there's been a lack of communication between Conifer and the board regarding moving dates, number of students. Providing, I actually found an email that Diane sent to the previous town manager and the Conifer rep, whose name is eluding me, asking for the registration materials to be sent out with leases so that we can get students enrolled as quickly as possible in, and into our schools when that just did not happen as far as I, I understand. So it just seems that we need some sort of better mechanism to communicate. Because right now, I think we, we found that was it, there was three two bedrooms, three, two, three bedrooms still. And a third, in about thirty two bedrooms still unoccupied. And so that would, those are all potentially students. At least one student potentially.
When is the next phase in? When is the next move in phase?
Mr. O'Sullivan?
I did request an update from Conifer regarding their, their movement dates. They have fully leased out the entirety of the units. They have not moved in yet. They're expecting them to be moved in for the next several weeks. They were able to provide me some additional information regarding school age children.
Great, thank you.
And children under the age of five, which I can forward to.
That would be helpful.
Yes.
I just received that just earlier today.
Thank you.
That would be very helpful. So we can plan, you know, when we have schools that are at or close to max.
Well, we have F N Brown is just about at max. Class sizes there are very large. It just happens to be our school that we do elementary multi-language learners. So we need to keep some space there in case we have a percentage of the students that moved into Verona Flats are, have been screened and are multi-language learners. So we did place some at Brown. We're trying to strategic strategically place students in areas that have smallest class sizes, but landing is that capacity. Brown is reaching capacity. Forest has room in individual classrooms, but doesn't have any more open classrooms. So it, the space issue is concerning, especially looking at the fact that we could potentially have another thirty students coming in from those unoccupied apartments. And, you know, we welcome them to Verona and we want to educate them. We just want to be able to do that in a way that is not overcrowding our, our schools.
Diane, do you have a number on how many of the move in so far? Were already students in Verona? I know there's
One.
Just one.
Yeah.
So, and, and even if all the new students that move into flats are Verona residents, say all thirty of them are Verona residents already, what that does is it kind of shifts. So that will be thirty empty apartments or homes in, in Verona that then potentially could have more students moving in. So it's not like a zero sum game. It's, it does also open up to, you know, thirty can become much more than thirty.
So I guess what's difficult for me to share concerns specifically is with only twenty students. You don't want to, I don't want to give information that may identify a student. However, I, I do feel the need to say that, that, that we are expecting to get and were expecting to get and has, have gotten students that are more costly than a regular seventeen thousand dollar per student cost. So leading into the next topic, and I'm not pushing us there, I just wanted to express the concern about potential students, like for instance, one student that moves in, we don't have this situation, but it's potentially there that moves in that needs an out of district placement could cost the district three hundred thousand dollars for one student. It's a tremendous amount of money and we have we have been working really hard since I got here two and a half years ago, almost three years ago now, gone so quickly, to try to improve outcomes for kids. And to divert money away from that is really, it disheartening, I have to say the least, because you, you're not, we, we can't change outcomes for students on a negative budget. You can't add programs. We, our budget this year was very difficult and I, I thank Mr. Cruz every day for being able to get us to cap. We had to cut one point five million dollars out of our budget to get to cap. It would be helpful if the township could figure out a way to help offset the costs of some of our students. As I mentioned, we had several multi-language learners that will require us to, to hire another teacher for that. So it's, it, it's, it's going to be tight with this project and also whatever's coming down the road with the Spectrum three sixty. And we know that you got another mandate for more housing from the governor's office recently. So if we can just work together to try to make sure that we are supporting our schools to the point where we can keep moving in the right direction and not slide back.
So just, I guess, before we move on to, to the next topic, anyone else have any comments they wish to share?
I, I just want to point out, I think all those comments are heard. And for the public edification, there was a small group session before this with the mayor, deputy mayor, president, vice president, the once the council approved the agenda, we had a, Mr. O'Sullivan, Ms. Kirin and board organized a time for everybody to get together. Obviously, I'm sorry, the deputy mayor was not on the call, just putting it out there. But Mr. Loya was there as well and, and there were some extensive, more extensive discussions on some specific needs that may not be appropriate to put in the general forum. But I think all of those concerns are heard and it is important for the, the council to understand those concerns. And this is really the first time we're hearing of some of them as far as some of the, you know, additional special ed expenses and some of those large ticket items. So it is helpful to have. And there, all of those things are, are heard. And I think just for the, the public edification, both the Board of Ed and the township are significantly restrained by a two percent tax gap that is put forth by the state legislature. The board and the township have the same tax gap. We cannot raise our, our tax levy beyond that amount. Except in certain circumstances, right? So the board and the township can increase that for debt service. So you might actually see a budget higher than two percent. But that's because we're paying back bonds with that or a referendum based on that as well. There are certain ways that you can get a waiver on that for extraordinary healthcare increases. There are certain things on the school board side for extraordinary population changes, but I don't think the the, even sixty students would activate that, Diane, correct, for the, for the cap?
That's correct.
Yeah, so, but we're really constrained right now. A two percent tax cap when we're facing, we face like over twenty percent inflation in the last four years is not a sustainable model for local government, whether that be on the municipal side or the Board of Ed side. The township has been forced to make significant decisions about our own programs, who are able to hire purchases that we're able to make. And, you know, we're in the situation where we have similar, similar decisions. The, as we, as population Verona increases as well, we take on additional liabilities related to public safety, social services, recreation. All of those things expand as the population expands. And those are items that we have to think about as well. So I think the I'm not going to speak for every member of the council, but on my end, I think that certainly the township understands that, and our administration does that we're all facing that. The one significant difference in the financial operations between the Board of Ed and the township is that if the Board of Ed wants to borrow money, they have to go to the voters to borrow money through a referendum. The township does not have to go to the voters on those items. But we also have to borrow within our bond rating and we have to pay that back. And that all comes from tax levy as far as things go. So those are important things to note, and I think that one of the items that we should be doing is working together to lobby our legislature and the governor to rethink the, the tax gap. And certainly the most recent state budget did not fall within a two percent tax increase. So they're holding, the state right now is holding us to a very different standard than the state is holding itself, proving that two percent is untenable level. And I, you know, I don't want to sound like the person out there saying that we should be raising taxes more and more. But when you have those expenses and you get to the point where we're constrained by that amount and we're talking about cutting programs and making difficult decisions, that is, that is very hard. And the township, over many years, has lost a lot of staff to attrition. And okay, for instance, we have to hire additional staff because of changes of the Public Records Act where we basically almost have a full-time employee in the police department because so many people request body cam footage and that has to be edited. So you're talking about paying a salary to confidentially edit those videos and things like that, which we had nothing to do with. So a lot of the issues that we're facing and that you're facing, we didn't create. And that's where the opportunity for us to work together. And, you know, I suggest that maybe we try to have an opportunity to sit down with with our legislative delegation, but also our local representative from the governor's office and start to have these conversations about how the policy needs to change on the state level. Whether it be keeping the tax gap, you know, changing it to another amount or changing the exemption requirements so that you can actually go beyond the cap. So.
And I just want to add to, thank you, Mayor. I just want to add to that by saying, I don't, I'm not sure on the municipal side. But if the district goes out with a question or a referendum, for instance, if we felt that we needed to add ten teachers, we go out to the public and ask for the monies to do that, and it fails, we cannot use district money to add those ten teachers. So we would never go out with a referendum like that. That's so risky. And we are also operating outside of our control. In, in addition to the cap, tax levy cap on municipalities and school districts, there's also a school district funding formula that has never been adequately calculated or implemented. We are currently out of, under adequacy by eight hundred thousand dollars based on the school funding formula. So it's kind of like if you if you put five dollars into your bank account and you need fifteen, you only have five to take out. And that's what's been happening. So the funding formula is there. They never put enough money in the line item, in the line to fund schools adequately. And that's where Verona is right now. We are underfunded by about eight hundred thousand dollars. And again, outside of our control, but something that we have to live with and work with.
We, we face the same issues with not getting all the funding that we're promised by the states, but our local energy receipts and, and things like that, and various other pieces where the state is really not meeting its obligation to us financially that has promised. And that money is being diverted to other places as well. So there is a, there's a greater greater complication that, that exists and that is really harming every, everybody in our township as a result of those policies that are being made outside of our control.
But I do think the one thing that is in at least the township's control is. The pilot funds that are currently being. Given to the township, for lack of, paid to the township, I guess is a better way to say, from our developers. Um I believe it's tuned about one point seven million dollars um based on the current budget that you guys have posted. Which the school district received zero dollars from. So for everyone uh who is listening. Um any student that comes, and and I don't want to point out these students, I I I don't. Um but when you build. Models, we'll use Anan as an example. Um in that facility, in twenty seventeen. That facility before it became the apartments, paid the township a hundred and twenty nine thousand dollars in taxes. When that became a pilot project, that was removed as a ratable. So the township doesn't receive tax levy from it, they receive pilot fund funds from it. The Board of Education no longer receives tax levies from it. So you've removed a property from our ratables. But did not provide us. The funding that we would have provided, would have been provided had it been taxed. So that's a loss to us of about eighty four thousand dollars. And in twenty seventeen funds. Um in twenty twenty five, Anan paid two hundred and seventy two thousand nine hundred and thirty two dollars. In pilot funds. We got zero, but we do have students that come from Anan that we pay for. Um in addition, funding schools is not just for the people who have children in schools. I pay taxes before my children entered school. I will, my children are graduating in a few years, I will pay taxes probably for another twenty years after they graduate. Um there are people in this town who have never sent school children. But our residents benefit from a strong school system by the property values. In their town. Um in the last master plan survey. In the past twenty years, they asked people who moved to Verona in the past twenty years, why did you move here? Fifty-three percent said due to the quality of the educational system. And then it went back into the appendix, appendix A, page six. Um importance of issues, the quality of public education was rated very important by eighty-one percent of the respondents. And important by thirteen percent. Only one percent said it was not important. So the township has spoken, the residents have spoken, the schools are important, and when. Funding is not provided through the schools and is actually removed from the tax base. It harms the school system and harms the residents. You know, just again, from the the township's budget, if the Anan building was taxed. Based on its value, it would bring in eight hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars. Of that at sixty-five percent, which is about what the the school board. Percentage of the taxes is, the school board would would receive approximately five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. I asked Miss De Giuseppe earlier, what would you do with one point one million dollars, which is the sixty-five percent of the one point seven million dollars?
I would add teachers to reduce class size. I would add interventionists. Uh we have two interventionists in the entire district, and both do reading. We have no math intervention, and our math scores show that. Um I would add uh uh something we're going to talk about later, a substance abuse or a student assistance counselor, which we also do not have. We could use more counseling at the elementary level where they share a counselor between each each elementary shares a counselor. Uh we see the growing need for um for more counseling at one school or the other. Um but for the most part. We have kindergarten classes this year that are at twenty-four and twenty-five students. Uh we have first grades that are at twenty-five and twenty-six students. Um we have some some pockets where we have smaller class size, where we've had a bubble and had to add a third section. But for the most part, um it's not sustainable.
But what's not being added, just I just want to highlight, it was all student focused, teachers, counselors, interventionists. We're not adding another assistant principal, we're not adding, you know, uh another administrator. And I'm sure Mr. Cruz could use an assistant BA, but we're not doing that. It would be teachers.
Mr. Cruz and I share an administrative assistant.
Teachers, counselors, interventionists.
With the facilities department.
That is, that is what we are looking for, you know, um. So our ask, and I'll say it in public, and I'll say it right now, our ask is sixty-five percent of pilot funds. Now and in the future, as well as a seat at the table. For a board representative or Miss De Giuseppe or her representative, whenever a pilot project is negotiated. We don't have a seat. Decisions are made that impact us that we have no say in. So that's the ask, that was asked once, what the ask was, that's the ask.
Thank you. Um for the the public edification, our small group meeting. Uh one of the items that came up, we had a long conversation philosophically about pilots and things like that. And I did request an ask from the board because we needed to go somewhere with this, and I thank you for providing that. Um I do want to provide some background on pilots and how they come forward and they use, because they're often misunderstood by the public and and individuals. Um a pilot project comes with a redevelopment plan, so if you have a piece of property that meets certain criteria. Um it can be approved as a um area need of redevelopment by the planning board and the township council. That both bodies have to agree to that designation. Uh you can look online in the in the uh state law, we're very encumbered by that. Uh as far as how that can be done. From there. Um there is a negotiation, um when, if that redevelopment plan is approved, there is, it doesn't necessarily have to be a pilot. Okay, we can still charge standard property taxes on an area need of redevelopment. A pilot or payment of lieu of taxes is an incentive that is provided to a developer to engage in reasonable development. Right? So uh development that is good for the community and um does not create additional issues. So uh for example, in a redevelopment agreement, the township can negotiate the number of units in a apartment building. It can negotiate the, how many of these units are multiple bedrooms. Um it can um negotiate, you know, various other things as far as appearance and um. And setbacks and things like that, um that can be done in order to make a building fit into the municipality a little bit better. What that does, that helps the the school district, and I'm not saying the pilot is, helps the school district as much as we would like, obviously. Um is it actually limits the number of students who enter the school district by having those agreements. Uh because it can reduce the total number of people who um total number of units or the number of bedrooms, things like that. We tend to push when we have development, except for affordable housing requirements, which are once again not under our control. We tend to push to have more one-bedroom units and things like that on the planning board and council level. Uh because that does not bring students in. Um a lot of places, we unfortunately have not had this um interest, but. A lot of towns will do age restricted housing, which meets the same objective. Um so this is one of the things to consider. Right now, um if there's a pilot agreement, ninety-five percent of the. Uh that pilot payment that's negotiated between the township and developer goes to the township as hence spent as designated. And five percent goes to Essex County. There isn't a formula for the school board to receive any specific money under the state. However, the pilot does not negate the tax levy on the land assessment for a property. The pilot is for your improvement assessment. So for instance, uh Anan flag that was brought up. Um is still being taxed on eighty-five thousand six hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty cents of the land assessment. Um and that is being, that normally allocated as it would be with the school district receiving fifty-five, fifty-six percent of that. The township receiving about twenty-five percent, and Essex County receiving about twenty percent. So the land assessment doesn't change. Um correct in that, Mr. Loya? Just want to make sure. Um so there is still not, there's still money coming in just from the land assessment on all of these pilot agreements. And typically, the number of students in one of these pilots is low, um and if we're talking about breaking down. The students being in the buildings, there is some funding coming in. Um so that's just one piece of that. The way pilots have worked in Verona for years, and I just want to note it that I have not been on the council, and we have engaged in a pilot agreement. Uh there has not been one the last four years. Um there are requests for developments. Before the council, before the planning board, um there's been no specific conversation or consideration of a pilot. Um since in the last four years, as far as engaging in one of those agreements. The last pilot agreement that the council um engaged in was for the One Sunset Avenue property. Um and right now, that property is um currently used as a school, it's a nonprofit. Uh which is tax exempt on their property taxes. So there's no revenue coming into that, either to the township or to the. Um to the school system. There is a a pilot there, um because, once again, it allowed some. Uh negotiation to have a better development in that process. Um part of the. There is a, it, which does bring in revenue, right? Uh previously, that had been half on the roach, Jack, right?
Yes.
Okay, where the township was getting some um funding on both the the land and the improvement assessment. Uh but then we got nothing, nobody got anything. That pilot was put into place about the same time as the last round of affordable housing was uh imposed on Verona. If we do not meet our affordable housing obligations, these builders can engage in what's called a builder's remedy lawsuit. Which would allow them to build in in areas um that would satisfy affordable housing. And build a lot more units than any of us would want, whether it be the council or the uh the Board of Ed. In order to avoid that, the township did a couple things, and I was not on the council during this time, so correct me if I'm wrong and if my council members. The first was uh spending about ten million dollars to purchase land at the corners of Pine Street, uh Bloomfield Avenue and Lynn Drive. Um in order to provide that land to a developer. Uh the the prior iteration of Conifer, it was um Pearl, right? And we had to buy that six million, I'm sorry. Um there were actually two properties, though. Two properties totaling six million, did I read? It was six, okay, because I just read the two bonds. And sorry, me, eight million, okay. I just read the bonds, and I think I might have double added them, so let's say it's eight million dollars. Um by the township spending eight million dollars to build ninety-five units of affordable housing. That potentially decreased significantly by like eighty percent potentially. The number of affordable housing units that could have been built in Verona through builder's remedy lawsuits, all right? So that that eight million dollar investment the township put in has protected the school district. From getting a massive amount of student inflow. In addition, the township also bought. Um two properties, one on Mount Prospect uh Avenue and. Uh another property on, between Commerce Court and uh Brux- uh Bruxite Terrace. Um what's the number on that, Kevin? Do we, we just talked about? So another.
Twelve million total.
Twelve million, so another, another twelve million dollars spent on that. By the township buying those properties. It insulated the municipality and the school board from additional housing units being built. For individuals who are not aware of the plans for the property on Commerce Court. It was going to be hundreds and hundreds of affordable housing units, um all that were slated to be multiple bedroom units, I believe, or most of them at that point. It's three hundred and sixty units. Um so that insulated as well, that period, and the township has taken the entire burden on that. So some of that money has been reimbursed through the open space tax, which the taxpayers have agreed to pay, which is three pers- three cents. Per one hundred dollars of assessed value on their homes. And the other part of that. Um is being paid back with the pilot funds that are uh have been agreed to from the One Sunset Avenue property. It should be noted that the township has not received any of the pilot payments from the One Sunset Avenue property. Because they were set to go into effect either in twenty twenty-six or when the improvements were were started. And the improvements haven't been started yet, we will start to see income from there at that time. So it's important to note that the township has spent about twenty million dollars. To of not only pilot funds, but also raising tax revenue. In order to, and borrowing that money, which means that the, in the end, the actual liability to the township and the taxpayer is going to be. Significantly higher because of the amortization of those bonds and those loans. In order to insulate from what would have been a very difficult situation if we had hundreds and hundreds of more units built. So I I want to put that out there for the public edification because it's important to contextualize. What we're talking about with the pilot funds. When we talk about a pool of money, right, um it can be spent on one thing, if it's spent on one thing, it can't be spent on another. So the township engaging in um those purchases. It stopped the township from being able to meet other um necessary requirements. For instance, the township has uh. Demonstrated need in a public safety facility for for decades. That money could not be used to provide that. Um but at that point, the council, and I agree with their decision-making as the Monday morning quarterback here. Um I think engaged in actually a very brilliant approach, and I give all of the council members who are on the council at that time credit. In order to minimize what the impact of development would be on the township. Um so I think that's very, very important to note. At the same time, um. Any future developments that would ask for a pilot would be requested. I can't speak for the entire council, obviously, but but would be requested to minimize those two bedroom units and those things. Um in order to reduce the impact on the township. But that being said. Right now, there's really nothing we can do about the pilot money that has been allocated. To cover these millions and tens of millions of dollars of the projects that were necessary in order to insulate the township. And the school district from overgrowth, but. I hear the board's position on this and wanting a a seat at the table. Um I think that's something that the council needs to discuss as the township council and in in a council meeting, this may not be the. You know, the right venue for that, right? But we need to hear from options, we need to hear from um. From our our experts. What I would say is, I think it is reasonable, as a personal opinion rather than the council's opinion, or as an opinion of the mayor. That if there were to be a negotiation regarding a pilot project. To invite the board, so we would notify the board that this is being discussed, it's public knowledge regardless, okay? And if it were in closed session, we would have to work with our legal experts to determine at what point the board might be able to opine. And to notify the board that a pilot is being considered, which I think is at minimum, basic courtesy. Um and then ask the board, based on the site plan, the potential site plan. To calculate an impact, an actual impact on number of students who may enter, okay? And if that's a revision of a current property where they're residential units, consider, okay, how many students might be leaving? The school board has a demographer. Um we also have consulting firms on these items as well, that can chime in. Um and allow the board to give the board an opportunity to share their concerns about that. But also a reasonable opportunity to suggest, if we have this coming in. Would there be additional funds to help make up for these other needs that the board has that Mrs. De Giuseppe has. Uh articulated in detail, which is very helpful to hear. Um that would be a reasonable path of moving forward to have those conversations. There are models that really runs the gamut on what municipalities do with pilot funds. Um some have no negotiation with the school board at all, some give a certain percentage. Um, some will give a lump sum, so for instance, Cedar Grove with that giant hilltop development um gave some lump sum payments to the board for a certain number of years. Um, but there, those are all options. We have to balance the impact of the development versus the impact of prior development also. Um, and I think developing a procedure where that comes up and we can look at real numbers, it may be a different percentage, I appreciate the board, they ask a sixty-five percent. It may be, which is to note, higher than the than the current portion of the boards. However, if the pilot is going to be slightly less than the actual value, I understand why the board would want sixty-five percent. Um, but it may be something where a formula is considered that is fact-specific based on the on the the actual development impact. Um, but I think it's positive that we're having the conversation moving forward and really understanding how things go. It's, Mr. Leia, could you just opine quickly on how a pilot affects the the ability of either the township or the school district to um raise funds on a, on its budget, on the two percent? Maybe I'm not asking the question well. So if we, if we, if a property is no longer on the the improvement tax register, it's still on the um, it's still on the land tax register, right? The state ability, uh, the state requirements that allow us to raise our budget, um, our tax levy are based on the prior year's tax levy, they're not necessarily based on the.
That's, that's correct, so it's not based upon the assessed value of all the properties within the township, is that what you're going?
Yes.
Good, so what happens is, um, the school board budget um is passed amongst all the properties that are not part of the pilots, the same thing with the county. If you don't participate in pilots and all the other towns participated in pilots, technically all those towns uh that participate in pilots, all those properties together, the county still gets its tax, so it's spread across those properties that aren't pilots. But it's the same way, it doesn't actually impact your budget as much as it impacts how your budget or what properties your budget is spread across in order to make up your budget.
And that goes for the township and the school board, just.
That's correct.
I want to clarify that.
And the county taxes.
And the, and the county, and I think that's one of those things, but um that is, my suggestion is that if the council's heard from the school board extensively, the school board has heard from the extensively. Um, and at this point, I think the the council would want to have a conversation the next time a pilot comes up that would establish some guidelines to uh involve the school board. Um, I think we can get those communication guidelines done very quickly, right? And make a policy, that could be something township manager does specifically. Um, and then as these things happen, um, start to develop those conversations and those structures to have those conversations. Um, that I hope that, that uh communicates to the school board that the township and the council are are serious about um the concerns that you've raised and on a go-forward basis, trying to help to alleviate some of those concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to open up if anyone had comments on either the township council or the Board of Ed side?
Yeah, um, I I have a a question or a comment and a question. I mean, uh, my colleagues here on the board are probably sick of me saying this. Um, I'm obviously never a fan of the pilot program. I think from its inception, it was never intended for communities such as ours and communities and um in uh West Essex County, however, here we are. Um, I I uh for the mayor, I I just have a clarifying question. You 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 mentioned how um you you and other communities have used pilot pilot programs in an effort to avoid um potential uh builder lawsuits that could force larger developments. Two questions on that. Um, one, do you have any examples or situations where that has actually taken place? Um, and what does that look like? And and second, how certain are we that in that scenario that I I think you said that the um the Camco project would have been eighty percent more? Um, how do we come up with uh to that number?
I'm going to take Camco. Uh, I'll leave Deputy Mayor then.
Uh, I could speak to the Camco project, uh, as we talked earlier, it was two separate properties, it was Camco and it was Pokel. Uh, we went out and spent, uh, the number we spent was two million, six million dollars for the properties, they were three million each. And then as the manager said, we spent two million dollars to clean the properties up. Uh, prior to that, uh, when we, when we acquired Camco or when it came to the council, we had four, five interveners, uh, well, four interveners on on five pieces of property. Uh, Camco came to us and and offered the property. The first plan for Camco was eighty-five units. Uh, Pokel, the corner property, was the first intervenor that we settled with. And we were going to put, I believe there were sixty or sixty-five units, we're going to go on that three acre piece of property along with, I believe it was somewhere in the neighborhood, don't quote me, the ten thousand square foot of of retail space. Uh, Pokel decided they didn't want to do the project, came to Verona and offered us uh the property for three million dollars. Uh, of that sixty or sixty-five units, we we had ten uh affordable units that were going there. So we acquired the other three acres totaling six acres for six million. We took those ten units and added them to the eighty-five we were putting on Camco. We lowered the height of the building, uh, because we had a obviously a higher building going on the property because we had eighty-five on only three acres. So we basically spread it out and and when people come to us and say, oh, that the development, the buildings don't look very well. I always say to them, it could have been a lot worse, and that's the perfect example of how we negotiated and we spent a little bit more money and obviously got a a better project on that, and we reduced the amount of units by, you know, obviously, it's like fifty-something units less, fifty-five units less on that six acres of land. And that also gave us the opportunity to, uh, I'm not going to say get rid of other intervenors, but we, there were other pieces of property that, once we hit our number by putting those eighty-five units there, it stopped other projects. And as the mayor said, we spent another twelve million dollars purchasing property on the other two, and there would have been just on those two pieces of property, twenty-seven acres. We have three, the both plans were already set, three hundred and sixty units on those properties. So that's fifty, and then we had another forty in another location. So we were upwards of three hundred and sixty, excuse me, four hundred and sixty or four hundred and seventy units that could have been in the township on top of what we had. Uh, that spending the money obviously stopped that amount of development. And if you're looking at that, that's very, very close to the same amount of units that are on the property next to Verona Pool. There's four hundred and ninety-six units there, and we stopped close to the same amount from coming into Verona.
Deputy Mayor.
Anyone else?
So yes, I I just want to um address two things, uh, just for the public to have a understanding. Thank you, uh, Mayor, for uh thoroughly explaining uh pilot. And uh, one of the things is that, um, especially going through the current budgeting process for fiscal year twenty-six, which is the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Uh, by not having uh pilot funds, uh, there's two groups that are are uh being shorthanded here. It's the school board and the rest of Verona. Basically, um, I, as you could hear, I'm not sure if everyone has a full understanding, is that the rest of the taxpayers of Verona is actually footing the school tax bill. So the pilot projects are not, are paying zero. Um, as a result, we have a a budget that's over cap. So the current budget for twenty-five, twenty-six is actually one point five three percent over the two percent cap. Um, that's five hundred ninety thousand dollars, that's not in the current two percent cap. So if we were to have, and in in addition to that, one point five three percent over cap, we are riffing about four hundred thousand dollars of personnel that are non uh not impacting um instruction. So these are non-instruction positions.
One of them impacts destruction.
Okay, what, so so correction, one of them does impact instruction. Uh, but but the point is, that's actually a a a little over a a million dollars and and of an impact. So if we were to have received uh a portion of these pilot funds, we wouldn't have to go over a two percent cap um at this present time. And in addition to that, we wouldn't have to change and reposition. This is actually just the start right now. So this uh fiscal year twenty-six is the start of what Verona is going to start feeling, is going to start feeling the squeeze. Verona, as um uh Superintendent Giuseppi stated, we're fund, uh, basically, we're under adequacy when it comes to this uh state funding. Uh, what that means is that we're still compared to our peers, like a Glen Ridge or um a another school district our size and type, we we actually don't have the same budget and we're still performing the same results, or if not better, or or at the same as our peers. And that's what we're competing with, um, and that's the reflection of where we at. So I just want the public to have that understanding and to really be aware that the importance. And I, and I get what the the um, the town council actually, I I know that the decisions they made is actually for the future of Verona, but I I the, those decisions actually left a big, a big hole that's actually going to impact uh the school district for the next ten years plus. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Cruz, a question for you on that. All of financial projections right now are assuming that we receive the federal aid that we have been receiving, correct?
Correct, so right now, we we projected about seventy percent of the current federal aid, if um, to just to be conservative.
So uh, at a meeting um earlier in the week with Senator Ruiz and the Department of Education, uh, we were guaranteed that IDEA funds, which are federal funds that we receive for special education, would be intact, but it was interesting that they said for the fiscal year twenty-seven. Um, going past that, there was no guarantee that IDEA would be intact, and we were told to budget for significantly less entitlement funds. Now, for Verona Public Schools, we only get about a hundred thousand dollars entitlement funds, but a hundred thousand dollars is, you know, it's still a hundred thousand dollars that we'd have to make up if uh if some or all of that eventually gets um diminished. Um, I do also want to just point out that um while we're talking a lot about shortfalls, um, we have done, uh, Mr. Cruz and and the board and I have have dug deep into the spending habits of the school district and spent a lot of time cutting um where there was waste or where uh monies have not been spent appropriately. Um, and that's one of the reasons we were able to cut a million dollars out of our budget, but that fat is gone. Um, it is, uh, we, as I mentioned before, uh, we don't have the programs um to cut uh that other school districts do. So um I can speak directly to my former district, which is a little smaller, but not by much, about two hundred students smaller. When I left, it's a little smaller now than um than it was. Um, but had we needed to go into a a reduction in force, we had positions that we could lose and and still um not impact student learning. Um, that's not true here. As I said, we have two interventionist district-wide. Uh, we did not have inclusion. Uh, for those that don't know what inclusion is, it is the least restrictive environment for students with special needs, students with IEPs. Um, uh, we did not have um the least restrictive environment available to our students in kindergarten through fourth grade until last year. This is our second year functioning under the law. Uh, and um, and and really morally, what's right for students. Um, when when you have students that are only provided supplemental instruction or resource center instruction in grades K-four, this is what leads to the the test scores that we have currently because you have a good number of students that are not even being taught at grade level. And it's it's compounding on uh their understanding, which is why if you look at our special education test score specifically, students are more uh likely to score a um a not meeting grade level standards, which is a one versus a three, four, or five, which is three is approaching grade level standards, four is meeting grade level standards, and five is exceeding grade level standards. We had zero special ed students in a in a category of five. And most were not in four, actually, most were in one and two. So um we are seeing tremendous leaps oh in in a very short period of time. Uh, we have seen our our percentile rankings in the state jump ten, twenty, thirty, uh, twenty-five percent um at some of our schools. Uh, Forest went up by forty percent. Um, and again, I'm just reiterating that that comes at the same time that we are becoming more efficient, yet focusing our efforts in instruction. It is frightening to me to think that that is going to not be possible moving forward without doing something like redistricting, cutting athletic programs, cutting um unfortunately uh expensive. I, everyone in this board knows, and everyone in this town knows, I am a music supporter. But that's a very expensive program. Um, you know, we're a school district first, and those things are things that support our students. But if we have to start cutting a million dollars out of our budget every year to make cap, something's got to go.
I was, wanted to to share something similar to that, and and just to piggyback off of what you were saying. You know, I'm, I I commend you, Mr. Giuseppi, and I'm proud as a board of the the gains that we've made over the past few years, the services that we're able to offer to students that were not offered. Um, you know, I thank the council for being here, and uh Mayor Tambora, I thank you for explaining the process um of pilot. You know, through that, I heard that, you know, I I understood at least that we could have had a lot more students, right? That we were able to to lessen the amount, which is wonderful, however, the reality is that we're gaining students. And we've, we've made these strides to provide these additional services, however, when teachers are spread too thin, they're spread too thin, right? So my concern is that as we start to see class sizes grow, the students who are currently being serviced, because we have finally been able to provide the services for them, are no longer going to be receiving these services because we're going to have so many new students coming in who may need the services more, right? So who may need, um, you know, whether it's ML learners or special, you know, additional special education or, you know, who, where where we may be currently servicing students who are falling one grade below grade level. If we have students come in that are falling three grades below grade level, that's, th- those are the students that we're servicing. So I I really do worry that, you know, without the funding, we're not going to be able to continue the service, the services that we're providing, we're not going to be able to continue on this path that we finally um have had in Verona with with, you know, as far as intervention services and and special education. I mean, we just started our life skills program, right? If we don't have the funding for that, what does that look like in the next five years? So this isn't just about today, and we know, you know, with the pilot projects, with any construction project, it's years later, right? I'm not worried necessarily about five years later, I'm worried about now and what's going to happen from today it within the next five years, these are our kids right now that we have to serve. So, you know, I think that while I I'm open to and I appreciate and I'm looking forward to continuing these conversations, I I think that, for lack of a better term, we have to stop the bleed right now, too, and 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 try to make a decision and to make um, you know, find a way to to work together now, not just for future projects.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, and just um for everyone's knowledge, IDEA is the federal special education law, it comes with funding. I think we get about five hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred thousand. Um, if IDEA goes away and the funding goes away with it, under New Jersey education regulations, we still have to provide the same services we are providing now to our students without the funding. So we would be legally, as well as morally obligated to educate the students to the same extent that we do now. Um, not to get into federal politics, we've all seen what's going on. I don't know what's going to happen next year or the year after. I know it's a conversation that me and my colleagues in the education world have every day. Um, so, you know, just be aware, so. Um, is any, any further comments?
I think I'll just make one final comment and then transition to our next topic. Um, just to, quick to Mr. Cruz's point about the township, each household in the township having to pay a little bit more because of the pilot funds. I just want to note that the money that the um the township is using from pilot to pay for these other projects like the um the the land purchase for the development and stuff like that, that didn't come of pilot fund, then the township. then the township would be raising that through, through tax revenue anyway, right? So the, we have one set of taxpayers and the burden is going to come in one way or another. So on that end, I don't want the taxpayer to think that they're necessarily getting the short end of the stick because of this. Because whether it's the, the school board that has the money or whether the township is spending it on stuff, if we can't, if the township still had to big those purchases to stop another 400 plus units of housing to go in and weren't able to pay that back with the, the funding that we had through that negotiated agreement, that, that would have to be paid off through debt service from your regular tax levy. So start that there. I did ask for, just for the public application, the school board had proposed items one through five of the agenda and the township obviously agreed to discuss these items. And they were valuable discussions and I thank the school board for their candor and, and the school administration as well. I did ask to add the fifth item with no objection from the council to discuss the efforts that the township and the school district could engage in to combat underage alcohol and drug use. This is unfortunately one of those topics that is something that we don't talk about as much as we should, I think, in Verona. If for, I've lived in town, well, I've worked in town for seventeen years and lived in town for about fifteen of those years. And it's something that seems to be an open secret that this is an issue in municipality. So I put forth this concept, this idea to see how we could work together. And I'll throw a little bit of background. We have VMAC, the Verona Municipal Alliance Committee, that is, that gets some funding from the state to provide programs. And the clubs and organizations that help build positive behaviors and things like that. You have programs that help parents to recognize the signs and symptoms of drug abuse. You have family nights. You have a lot of very, these very positive things. Obviously, their funding is, is limited. We, our police department does have a memorandum of understanding with the, the school district to help deal with some of these issues. But state law recently has made it even more difficult for the police to report out some of these things, even to parents. That did get changed, but there aren't as many consequences for these, for those types of behaviors and things like that. When I started as a teacher in Verona in 2008, we had a full-time substance abuse counselor, which is now called a student assistance coordinator. And that position several years ago was discontinued and, and became a, the full-time position was discontinued. And that person, that position became a counselor at the elementary grades. While there still is a certified person in the district, because we have to have one, that is not around as much anymore. And we spoke in our small group about that. And my hope is, is that, and I think why we have, we've added our grant writing thing to our shared services agreement is that the, the board has articulated and that there, there's a lot of difficulty getting grant funds. The school district, towns have been able to have some luck in this. And my hope is, is that we can use the, the, our grant consulting firm to potentially help get some grants for the township to take on some of that burden, I believe. And please, I, this is, I have to confirm this, but at one point, our SAC was partially compensated by the township. Or was, so we have some of that. I think that was grant funded many years ago, well, prior to my being here. All right. But that was a grant funded position as well. So it'd be nice to be able to bring some of those items back. I think that we should also institute programs. Diane, you'll have to jump in, the name of the program that Kinalan successfully incorporated. Every, every 10 minutes?
Oh, every 15 minutes.
Every 15 minutes. I always get the number wrong, so I, I would put out there. But programs that are very powerful, like every 15 minutes, which is, is undertaking and requires staff time and funding to do, are very powerful in helping some of these issues, assemblies around prom time, all of those items that we can get. But the reality is, is that just occasional programs aren't really enough to help combat this, that we need to have a more sustained approach. And that's something that hopefully the township can support by, we don't necessarily have a budget line for this, but township could support by potentially getting some grant funding as well. And, you know, having a thoughtful view between the, and involving the school board more deliberately and the school administration in how the, the VMAC grant funds are allocated and what programs are done. And potentially, every so often, it's a good idea to evaluate those. I sat as a member of VMAC for, as an ex-FCIO member, as a club advisor for many years. And they do a great job at VMAC. Councilman Holland is, is on the VMAC committee as our liaison. But it's always a good time, maybe to strategically view what objectives are and how we can work, all work together to make those things work. I don't know if the board has any, Diane, if you have any.
Thank you, Mayor. VMAC is very generous to the board of their very small budget that they get annually. They give, this year, the next fiscal year's budget looks like it should be around close to sixteen thousand dollars. And that funds a variety of programs. The board is actually meeting, the VMAC committee is, multiple lines is meeting, is meeting on March 31st to discuss that allocation. They, they fund programs that we do in our elementary schools like Lead and Babes. And they also provide a stipend for our Heroes and Cool Kids program. The, we are, they are also paying this year for an assembly. And it is a one-time assembly, but I do happen to know this is a very impactful assembly. Mrs. Frisco saw this at another school district. Mrs. Peter, my humanities supervisor, went and saw this, an evening program in Caldwell, where she lives. We are hosting on April 3rd for both our students. And in the evening on, on April 2nd, Chris Heron. And Chris Heron, for those that don't know who he is, he was a basketball player. He played, he was from Massachusetts. He played, finally made it into the NBA, played for the Nuggets and then was transferred to the Celtics. And as a kid from Fall River, Mass, the Celtics was a dream. That dream was shattered due to the disease of addiction. And he's a very powerful speaker. He'll be talking to our students. I, I think it's really, it's difficult. You would think one person as a SAC is, is just one person, but a good SAC can make the difference in a high school. Mayor Tamboro mentioned every 15 minutes. The every 15 minutes program is tremendous, but it's also thousands of hours of planning time. For those that don't know what it is, and I don't want to speak too in depth about it because it takes away, if we were to move in that direction, we actually had in Kinalan, a helicopter come to onsite, an emergency helicopter and air vac our kids out. It's a simulation of a car crash after distracted and or drug or drinking, driving. And our students take part, their parents are volunteers, there are deaths occur, our parents read obits that they wrote for their children. It's very impactful and we did it every two years. But literally it, without a SAC coordinating, calling the trauma center to arrange for a freebie ride in the helicopter for our kids, the car that is smashed up, the emergency response that comes. Like it's, it's not, it's not something that we would even begin to be able to undertake without someone in that position. Another thing a SAC would do for our students is if you have a student that tests positive for drugs or alcohol in the school day, we would ask them to attend an outpatient alcohol rehab program. It's an education program and that SAC would coordinate that. We don't have that here and we don't ask our students to do that. And I don't want this to become just more of me whining about what we don't have, but we don't have it. And, and having to cut 1.5 million out of the budget, we're not getting it anytime soon. But programs like Lead, programs like Babes, programs that, that VMAC is bringing to the district certainly will shed light on the idea of addiction as severe as what Chris Heron suffered. But we know alcohol is a gateway. We know marijuana is a gateway. I'll go one up and saying that, and again, and this is not my political opinion, just a game changer for kids. The legalization of medical marijuana and the legalization of marijuana in New Jersey was a game changer for our students. One program that we had, and I want to go on record by saying I'm not looking to bring it here, was a random drug testing program in the high school that I came from. And there's, there was just a lot of, of stuff that we didn't know was happening, that you don't see that comes out when you have a program like that. So our, a good SAC makes the difference across the board in a high school. And high school kids, it's not a Verona problem. Isolate to Verona that kids drink. And, but we would, we do need to take a look at educating our parents about hosting, educating our kids about the dangers of, of alcohol and marijuana being a gateway drug. Anyway, thank you, Mayor, for bringing this to everyone's attention. It is a problem.
I, I just, sorry to sidetrack. I just wanted to add on to what you were saying, along with all those addiction problems with the legalization of sports betting. We are seeing significant, significant gambling problems, even though you're not supposed to be gambling under the age of 18. There's a lot of problem gamblers with access to their parents' phones. Counseling services haven't even begun to scratch the surface of this issue as well.
Yes, thank you for that.
Well, I thank the superintendent and the board for, for hearing on that. We haven't heard any members of the council of any closing remarks or anything that they want to add. We're certainly not obligated.
Sure. Wow. It's, it also echoes in this room.
I just want to thank you for getting us all together. Obviously, I have two daughters in the Verona Public Schools. And, you know, I feel very strongly about being a resident of this town and the importance of the school district. So I thank you for getting us together to have this important dialogue. I also, you know, building on that last discussion, want to thank you Superintendent Giuseppe for your engagement in the VMAC committee, because I know you are very engaged. And we do have that meeting coming up on Monday. So thank you so much for hosting us this evening and for having this really important dialogue. Thank you.
And I want to add too that I really enjoyed this conversation and thank you. And I look forward for more detailed information in the future. I think more of an exchange is needed about our budget realities. I would love to give the school district everything that it needs, but the township also has its own challenges, some of which are documented in our budget binders and part of our budget workshop. I too am a proud parent of two children in the school district. And my oldest son is about to graduate and he received a wonderful education in the district. And my younger son is entering high school and is really excited about the STEM classes here. And the quality of the staff is just fantastic. And they both are members of the BAM program that you referenced and sports programs. So there is so much that this township has to offer and it is one big Verona family. And I also want to praise Superintendent Diane Giuseppe. I'm on several committees with her, including Neighborhood Traffic and Safety and the Multicultural Inclusion and Accessibility Advisory Committee, just to name a few. And I want to particularly praise you and the entire board for creating such an incredible culture of belonging. And in particular for our LGBTQ students, which right now we are in a very challenging time for them. And you are really standing with them and for them. And I, from a personal experience, from being a parent, talking to parents whose children, you know, are really as diverse as, you know, as, as America is, I really appreciate your advocacy. And I, I just want to end on that note. And I look forward to continued collaboration amongst our governing bodies. Thank you.
Thank you.
I too, I'll just echo my fellow council people. Thank you for having us today. These are wonderful conversations that I think we should have more often. I look forward to actually talking one-on-one with everybody. I think I, you know, this way you can get a little more in-depth into these conversations. I do totally agree with the communication system because there's so many calendars you got to look at. You just miss events and you hear about them a week later and you're like, oh, I would have went to that. But some people get them all, but I just, there's too much, not enough time to, to sit there and look at social media and get all of them. But I appreciate the time here and I, if Mr. Giuseppe would like to jump on the historic preservation or, or, or green team, you're more than welcome to come to those too.
Diane would be a great fit for sustainable Verona. I'm just putting that out there.
But thank you all.
Trees burnt last year with Carol Thomas.
At this, yep, go ahead.
Okay, at this time, we're going to open up for public comments. Could you guys do four minutes?
Four minutes.
Okay, just, can we just get consent from the board to allow four minutes for public comment for each person? Is all any objections?
Well, it can't be more than sixty, it can't be more than sixteen minutes of comments, so.
Yeah.
Three and a half.
There you go. Okay, just, I just wanted to be official, you know? So public, anyone from the public wishing to speak on any matter, please approach the podium. Once recognized, please clearly state your first and last name for the record. You do not have to state your address. You will have four minutes to address the board and township council. There'll be no cross dialogue during the public portion. If there's a question that can be answered, only the superintendent, board attorney, board president, mayor and mayor's attorney, and town attorney will respond and will do so at the end of comments. You will be granted one time to speak and there's a total of one hour for public participation. Again, please note there'll be no back and forth and we, we request you remain respectful. Thank you.
Mr. Petrangeli.
I wouldn't be a meeting if I didn't speak. All right, Paul Petrangeli, Verona. All right, where do I start now? Basically, I think the meeting is great for you guys. It's long needed. The communication needs to happen, as you spoke of today. You know, with the event coordination, I think that is great. I had that on my list, so I could take that off. The field study for the recreation department took years, so I think that's great that now we're moving with that, with the athletic director. Basically, the class sizes growing, that was a question also we had at the rec meeting the other day. The one school we didn't talk about was Brookdale. We talked about all the other ones are basically at capacity and then Brookdale. I just had a question on that one. And then basically everything else, I don't have any other questions, but I just want to state some things. The mayor talked about the pilot programs and the first thing is the area of redevelopment. Now, 383 Bloomfield Avenue was on the meeting before, I think it was Hill Press Farms. And that's next, an area of redevelopment that was voted on and passed by the zoning board. And then, basically, the pilot program stuff just isn't working. Our, we have no money. We all understand that. You guys are both doing what you can for the town. I think the town needs to look at what they're spending their money on with the playgrounds, the parks and things like that. And just, the school needs some, like they stated in the first opening statement, people move here because of these schools. It's the main reason people are in Verona. I think they need the share of the money from a lot of these developments coming into town because they get the burden, like they get eighty-five percent of the burden if a child moves into town. Yes, we get the benefits by them shopping at our stores and using our recreational facilities, but they get the burden. Since we're so good at getting grants for the town, I think a few months ago to a year ago, we had big discussions with the school board about SRO officers. Three, maybe two or three other districts in Essex County do not have an SRO officer. Our school board cannot afford it. It should be supplied by the town like most other school districts are. We can at least start with the high school and then move down below or hiring more police anyway. It was the last meeting, we're trying to get two more police officers. Let's get our schools safe before things happen. We all know people come when things happen. Obviously, nothing happened, so nobody's here except four or five people. I hope there's a hundred people on Zoom right now because when you complain, you should show up. Let's go with, yeah, we just need to stop the pilot program. Twenty-four and twenty-five students per class, it's just, we're getting, like, what are we going to do in 10 years? Are we going to build a new building? Are we going to add additions? We're going to need something. We need to plan for the future, so then the future board doesn't say, well, the board before me didn't plan for that. So we need to get ahead and we need to start today. We need to stop saying, okay, I don't have money for this, I don't have money for that. We need to work together now to get our money. We need to work together now to get our money. Where our mouth is, we need to, we need to support the schools. We need to. I split Everett in half, get it done for half and give the rest to the school board. Thank you. I don't need a response.
Thank you very much. Uh, anyone else? We should just approach the podium and speak. I think seeing no one, um.
I know Mr. Petrangeli didn't want a response, but I, I hate to, you know, not acknowledge Paul's participation. Um, just to clarify for the public, you brought up a development on a three eighty-three Bloomfield Avenue, the Hillcrest House. There has been no request before the township council for a pilot for that property. So just want to put that out there that, um, the zoning, I'm sorry, the planning board and the council have approved that. But there's not been any discussion or request on that side. Um, as far as the SROs, I, this is not a conversation. I think that has actually happened between the council and the school board, uh, as a request for SROs. However, going, you know, Paul had made the comment that we're hiring two more police officers. Um, in our budget workshop, the police department requested more officers because of a significant increase in call volume. Um, and as the township grows, that is one of the consequences that, that we have to face that we don't have much control over. Um, and, uh, you know, goes in that, you know, sharing kind of that burden on there. Um, but if we were to have six SROs, we would need six more police officers. Um, the two that are being hired are for additional call volume, not to, to be in one specific place at a time. So, uh, I just want to clarify to the public that we can't easily reallocate the police officer position from a patrol officer to a school resource officer without a significant interruption to operations of the police department. Um, and anybody who has questions on that should view our wonderful budget workshops where the police chief, uh, went through all of that information and in the next, in the coming, uh, months, we'll be having a, the police department will give their annual report, uh, where they detail the, the growth in the department and the calls and the issues that they're facing and regulatory concerns and, and things like that. Um, I also, Paul, I understand the, the desire township to look at where we're spending money. And I think this council has absolutely done that. Um, and for, as you know, the next, you know, there's a major, three major facility projects before the council is for providing facilities for emergency services and those are a big ticket item. Um, so it just, and they're necessary items. So I just want it on record that at this point, there are other very significant projects and burdens that the township is facing that we haven't even encumbered any funds for at this point. Um, so just, I, I think it's important for the public to be aware that, um, all of those things are coming down the line as well due to, once again, many things outside our, our control, like regulatory matters and, and, uh, even though we've been able to minimize growth of the township, we still have to deal with the growth that has been created and, um, various other issues related to laws, state laws and things like that. But as always, sir, I appreciate your comment at all of the venues that you comment at. Um, at this time, I will hear a motion to adjourn the special meeting at the council and we can leave the board to their meeting. Motion is made by the deputy mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second is made by Councilwoman Holland. All those in favor? I'm sorry, Councilwoman McGrath. Uh, I haven't, I haven't been home yet today. I apologize. All those in favor? Hi, anybody opposed? Thank you. Thank you to the school board for your attention and your partnership.
Thank you very much for participating and for anyone. Then we'll come back and go into our regular board meeting. Thank you. Thank you. We're gonna continue on with the Board of Education meeting. Uh, we're gonna start with routine matters. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes, uh, from the last board meeting on March eleventh?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Prisco, second by Mr. Boone. Uh, can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazella?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask for a motion to move the student report next on the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Prisco. Can I get a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Ferrera. Can I get a roll call when you're ready, Mr. Cruz?
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazella?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ryan, if you want to give the student report, thank you.
Yep. Okay, so, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so, um, today is, uh, March twenty-fifth and, well, even though it's March, prom is still coming ever closer. So, uh, this year's prom will be at the Legacy Castle in Pompano Flains. And tickets will actually start selling in two weeks' time from, uh, April eighth to the tenth. And they will be a hundred forty dollars per person. Uh, this Sunday, the, uh, National Honor Society is hosting a car wash down at the Verona Civic Center. This up from, uh, ten AM to one PM. And all donations and proceeds will go to, um, towards Tony's Kitchen. Uh, G O I, Girls Learn International and the Key Club are collecting donations for, um, a menstrual product drive until this Friday, the twenty-eighth. And donations are actually being accepted in the front lobby of high school right over there. There's a box in the corner somewhere. Um, and this April, uh, April eighth at six thirty PM in the auditorium here, uh, is, uh, VHS Royale, which seniors that were voted on by the student body are participating in a circuit of events with, uh, from like fashion show, Q and A, talent show and impression contest. That'll be really interest, pretty interesting. And last weekend, the VHS music program traveled to Toronto for, for four days. Main takeaway, Canada is cold. And, um, tomorrow at seven PM in the auditorium, once again, is actually the VHS Music in Our Schools concert, which, uh, features the varying ensembles, including the, uh, concert chamber choirs and of course the concert band. And another music thing, Jazz Night, April tenth, seven PM in the Goring Commons. And it's gonna, going to feature various ensembles and performances of jazz amongst other genres. And, uh, VHS actually debuted a new club recently, the Architecture and Design Club, which is seeking to promote student interests in, funnily enough, uh, architecture and design. And are trying to help students who are actively trying to pursue such a career in building a portfolio, portfolio for, um, college applications. And just to reiterate what, um, was brought up a few minutes ago about, um, what's happening on the third of April with the Chris Heron presentation, uh, which will be taking place around half the school day. I think it's very interesting. I think it's like, I, at VHS especially, like, I, at the middle school, there was a lot of presentations, assemblies. But I feel like at VHS there's, and that, that's not happening as often. I think this will be very interesting. And I think especially with how it's been stated, um, an hour, like thirty minutes ago about like the, the epidemic that is like substance abuse, especially in America's teenagers. I think it's a very interesting and, um, impactful thing to have, uh, such a influential and, uh, motivational speaker with such a empowering message that, uh, is influencing our youth, especially in these key, key years, which, uh, I believe up to the BU throughout high school from like the age fourteen to age eighteen. So I think that's very, it's very good. And that's all. That's right.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ryan. Um, can I get a motion to move, um, Laura Parmarisi's presentation next on the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Prisco?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Ferrera. Mr. Cruz, when we get a chance?
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar? Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazella?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Parmarisi, if you want to come up to the podium?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Exactly three weeks ago today was our last winter sport competition. Our girls' basketball team made it to the state semifinals. Um, and then less than a week later, we started our spring sports. Two hundred forty student athletes participated in winter sports, um, this past winter. Our boys' basketball team finished fifteen and ten, eleven and one at home. Our JV team was sixteen and four and our freshman team was thirteen and six. We made the state playoffs as the nine seed. We finished second in the holiday tournament and made it to the semifinals of the inaugural Essex County Invitational Tournament, where we lost to the champion Livingston. We allowed only forty-six points per game, which was in the top three of the SCC. The team collected U sneakers to donate to Angels on the Ground. They also raised over five thousand dollars in the shoot-a-thon with a portion being donated to St. Jude's Hospital. All-conference Freedom Division for Boys Basketball, first team Will Herman, second team John Luca Chiquetto and Jack Harmon, and honorable mention Sebastian Rodriguez. Our boys' track and field team had a great winter season with the exception of the weather. The boys finished second at SCC championships and had five athletes finish in the top six at sectionals to advance to groups. The four-by-four team of Madden Williams, Luca Di Fabrizio, Michael Siclary and Victor Yu finished fifth in the sections and placed third at the SECs to also break the school record. The record was originally three thirty-nine forty-six and they ran a three thirty-six ninety-four. Now, this is hot off the press. This past Sunday at the Adidas Nationals in Virginia Beach, Williams, Di Fabrizio, Siclary and Yu broke their own school record again, running three thirty-five. Evan Sang also competed in high jump at Nationals in Virginia and cleared six feet multiple times this season to take a sectional championship, advancing him to groups. Evan was first at SCC. Evan was first at SCCs and second at Essex County Relays with Jack De Mars. Michael Saclary was SCC pole vault champion. All-conference teams, first team Evan Sang and Michael Saclary; second team Aiden Ippolito; and honorable mention Logan Horton and Jackson Pope. Ice hockey. The VGR hockey team had a tremendous season with a record of 12, 9, and 1. Losing a lot of scoring to graduation, the team played a much more disciplined style and were extremely hard to play against every night. With a younger roster, the team made a tremendous run at the Kelly Cup Championships, but fell a little short losing in the semifinals. The young VGR team, only three seniors, battled through a tough schedule and secured the sixth seed at the state tournament. Yanni Yanni Otis received the Kelly Division All-Conference Honorable Mention. Wrestling. This year, our wrestling team finished the season with nineteen total wrestlers, including two female wrestlers, Isha Zao and Juliana Colle Leo. The girls competed in two jamborees and picked individual bouts during duel meets. Isha also competed in the county tournament. This is the first year since female wrestling was individually recognized by the NJSIA that Verona had a female wrestler, two of them. Both girls competed the entire season and planned on competing again next year. The boys' team competed in the Liberty Division of the SCC. They went 2 and 3 in the division. Overall, the season, overall, the team finished with a record of 6 and 19. The team forfeited between four to seven weight classes per duel meet, making team victories very difficult. Often, the final team score was within the margin of points given away due to forfeits. Individually, though, three wrestlers qualified for the Region 3 Wrestling Tournament by placing in the top three in the District 11 Tournament, Joel Gonzalez, John Stockelberg, and Jesse Wagner. They also finished in the top five in Essex County. Senior wrestlers Joel Gonzalez and John Stockelberg achieved their 100th career victories this season, two of fewer than fifteen Verona wrestlers to achieve this milestone. All-conference team, first team Joel Gonzalez, second team John Stockelberg and Jesse Wagner, honorable mention John Loudon and Dante Palmer. Cheer. What an incredible winter season for the Verona High School cheerleading team. From the sidelines to the competition mat, the girls gave it their all. The team was incredible cheering for both the boys' and girls' basketball teams, bringing the energy and showcasing their halftime routine at every game. The girls also had the exciting opportunity to perform at the New Jersey Devils game before puck drop, which was an unforgettable experience for them. The team performed their Christmas palm routine at the annual fair in the square and hosted a successful pizza with Santa fundraiser. The highlight of their season came in February, when our competition team attended Nationals in Orlando, Florida. This was the first time ever that the cheer, our cheer team has competed in this. The girls placed second in their division in game day routine and took home first place with their traditional routine. Such an incredible achievement for them. Swim. The VHS Boys Swim Team was 1 and 6 in conference, 1 and 8 overall. Daniel Frankla qualified for the SCC and Essex County Championship Meet and was also recognized as honorable mention all-conference. The VHS Girls Swim Team had a record-breaking season in more ways than one. Five school records were broken, and nine swimmers qualified for the SCC and Essex County Championship Meet. The girls were undefeated in the Liberty Conference, winning the conference, and not only qualified for the state tournament, but made it to the sectional championship finals. It was an exciting and extremely successful season. The girls finished 7 and 0 in the conference and 9 and 3 overall. First team, all-SCC Liberty Division, Vicki Sluck, Charlotte Roland, Edith Wong, Kate Carlson, and Juliana Alvarez. Second team, C.C. Manis. And finally, our girls' basketball team. Our varsity girls' basketball team compiled a 19 and 7 record, 10 and 0 in the SCC Colonial Division for their second straight conference title. The team advanced to the quarterfinal round of the Essex County Tournament and the semifinal round of the NJSIA North 2 Group 1 State Tournament. The junior varsity team compiled a 15 and 0 record and captured the championship of the West Essex Holiday Tournament for the second year in a row. Five players received all-conference honors. Morgan Rossi and Kali Jakamaza, first team; Jada Bednar and Leah Hagerty, second team; and Ellie Marateo, honorable mention. Sophomore Sarah Mraz was selected as the NJBCA Scholar-Athlete for Verona at the 2024-2025 NJBCA Tip-Off Classic. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parmarisi, and congratulations to all our student athletes. Moving on, we will, no. Moving on, we will have the superintendent report from Ms. Steve Giuseppe.
Thank you. So, I will be as quick as I can. Normally, our mid-year progress report on our district goals would normally come beginning of February to the end of January, but because of how we MAP test, that's why it's where it is in our year. Ah. No. I don't know.
On the side?
Oh, no.
Oh, it's on.
It's on.
Well, there you go.
Right now?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. So, just to start out, looking at the academic goals by school. And so, for the ELA, grades 3 and 4, this is Brookdale. They are approaching the goal, but I do want to point out to the board that MAP only tests reading. And NJSLA is a combination of reading, writing, and conventions of language. So, there's a caveat as to how close-aligned this is with regard to prediction. For math, we are on target to achieve our goals in both grades 3 and 4. For Forest Avenue, again, approaching those goals for ELA and approaching for math 3 and on-target to meet that goal math 4. I'm just going to click through. At Ben Brown, approaching on-target, on-target in ELA, at Lanning and approaching in math. And where it says approaching, I'm arbitrarily saying that there is less than a 5% difference in how our kids are scoring on MAP and how we want them to score on NJSLA. At Whitehorn HB, we're on-target to achieve, actually exceeded the goals in all of those areas for ELA, and we are not on-target to achieve our goal in math. I think that's been the story for a while across the district with math. We're looking to really target math next year, as well as elementary language. For Verona High School, we cannot use MAP to predict, so that's a blank on this. Other strategic plan goals. Oh, I can't do that. You do me a favor? You just click on the link there, because I don't think I can do that with this. Thank you. And you're going to have to stand there, Joe, because you have to scroll for me. Thank you. So, I'm not going to read through each one. This is our strategic action plan for this year. Anything that's in yellow is approaching, and that's more because it's a long-term goal that we're not going to, we know we're not going to meet every year. Anything in green, we've already met. And anything in orange, we are working toward. I think there's one or two that we have not met, and that has to do with the fact that we overshot what our goals are. You can just keep scrolling, Joe. I will, I'll post this to the board, so if anyone's really interested in reading what this is. These are just our other strategic areas. You can see most are either working toward or have met. There's, I think that those that we did not meet are down in community. Keep going, Joe. Yeah, I mean, there was one that, when we get to it, I'll read it and you can see it. We're doing well, in other words, and I'm trying to make this as quick as possible. Because, okay, that one is, we did not do the New Jersey School Climate Survey this year with our students. We had planned to do that, it's just too late in the year to organize at this point. And I think that, no, one more. Parent Academies, we had five parent academies last year. We didn't have any parent academies this year. We're going to make it a biannual.
Yeah.
That's it for, so I will post this so that you have it to look at. The bottom line is, we are working toward and making improved outcomes for kids, and we're getting there. And even just note, too, a lot of these goals were very lofty. When you look at a 10% increase in a goal, we set the bar high. If we don't make that goal, that's fine, as long as we're making some gains each year, which we have been. We did get our school performance reports, they are still embargoed. I will have, they're embargoed until March 31st. So at our next meeting, I will present on where we are with our school performance reports. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And moving on to the Business Administrator Report, Mr. Cruz?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This month in our finance updates, we have the January reports, the Secretary Treasurers and Transfer reports. I'm pleased to report that they're all in agreement. Last Wednesday, we successfully submitted our Alternative 2025-26 budget to the county office. Once the county reviews and proves it, the budget will be officially advertised before April 26th, I'm sorry, April 24th, and it will be presented to the public and the board at the April 29th board meeting. Regarding the resolutions on the agenda tonight, Resolution E5 proposes to maintain our non-residential tuition rates the same for 25-26 school year. Also, Resolution 26 is our new website and communication platform that will be saving the district a little over $10,000 each year by combining those two platforms together with a new provider. Resolutions E7 is actually a revision to our ROD grant resolution that was approved on January 21st. The SDA required us to specifically specify the local share for each project and also to state that we'll be using capital reserve funds and authorizing the 60% of the project cost. So that's a repeat of what most folks actually saw in January. And that concludes my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to committee reports. Ms. Ferrer, do you want to give us education? Thank you.
We spoke about already funds, we spoke about Chris Heron coming. You know, the schedule in the middle school is continuing, the teachers are being, you know, provided professional development, I believe, right, Mr. Giuseppe? Was the professional development already on it? Was that the right?
I'm sorry, say that again?
For the middle school schedule?
Yes, so they'll, they'll be getting professional development on extending these.
Additional minutes. Okay, I wanted to make sure that I was, I was saying that correctly, that I was sharing out that correctly on the additional minutes, because we're moving from the 45 to 55 minutes in the middle school, which will better serve all students to get those extra, that extra time in. One of the big highlights was that there was a field trip on Monday for K-12 students in the LLS and LLD program. They went to Lifetime in Livingston.
So great.
So, a thank you, a big thank you to Ms. Kohler for organizing that. Ms. Simmons shared that it was a wonderful experience for the students, and at the end of the day, they were really disappointed that it was over. So, those are really wonderful opportunities, and I'm so happy that we are able to do that for the students. The ESY, so the end-of-school-year programming is underway. The final thing was the Dreams Grant, so they finished that up. It's the Dreams Grant is for the nurtured heart approach. There'll be a special program for, with an author coming in with the imperfect Phil dog. So, they'll be coming in, and the final was really the final days of the BOG training, that has also concluded. The follow-up for that is going to be to continue building out the 18 to 21 program. And that's it for education.
Thank you very much. I believe the Facilities Committee, Matt, do you want to?
Brief, I'll keep it quick, too. There is a apprenticeship program that is going underway, allowing access for any district employee to train in skilled trades. It'll help with the future growth of attracting talent. In-house skilled trade craftsmen help lower the cost of using outside vendors for small projects. Also, they're currently talking to Public PSENG contract to lower the cost of, for needed equipment replacement, district-wide, energy savings types as well. We are looking into quotes for a new shed at VHS, and the painting of the pod is going to be taking place over spring break, so we can return that pod that was painted. The painting of the pod. And then I think, Mr. Cruz?
I would, and I'm sorry if I missed it, the hiring of the new licensed electrician.
Oh, yeah, yes.
I think it's a significant thing to call out in that it gives us an opportunity for efficiency and cost savings. Again, to kind of highlight the conversations we were having with our colleagues earlier, I think these efforts are going to be crucial just about every spot we fill. So, when we can find somebody that can do double duty, it's awesome.
Thank you very much. Moving on to finance?
Yeah, I'll take, I'll take finance. Again, nothing more to add, much, much more to add beyond what Mr. Cruz had to say. One, one thing to flag is that the, we will begin, there will be an evaluation coming up on the Food Services RFP, so more to come on that. Mr. Cruz touched on just about everything else there, so nothing more.
Great, thank you. Moving on to public comments, please. There's no one here. Can I get a motion to skip public? Motion from Mr. Walker, can I get a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Prisco? Mr. Cruz? I just should have had it.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar? Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazella?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, I just feel silly reading it. Do we have discussion items? Any older new business the board wishes to discuss? Okay, moving on. Oh, wait. Someone? We'll do it.
What I wanted to say, what was I just asked?
Oh, okay. Any correspondence?
No correspondence.
Okay, let's move on to action items. Can I get a motion to approve, to approve personnel items, A, 1 through A?
Seven.
Seven.
Second.
And moved by Mr. Boone? And second by Ms. Prisco? Any comments? Any?
I have something quickly. So as a prior Forest family, I just want to say thank you to Ms. Lawrence for her service. This will be really quick, but I'll never forget. She, she offered during kindergarten orientation, she said, "When the kindergartners start to go up, and it's the first time, if you want to call me and make sure that your child got in safely, you're more than welcome to." And I did that, and she picked up the phone, and she was so gracious. And she went in and she checked on him to make, I feel like I'm getting emotional. She went in and she checked on him to make sure that he was safe and sound, and that those are really important people to have. So, so thank you so much, Ms. Lawrence, you will be missed, and good luck and all the fun things to come.
Thank you. Anything else? Mr. Cruz, when you're ready, can we have a roll?
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazella?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to education, can I get a motion to approve B1 through, B10?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Ms. Prisco, second by Mr. Boone, any discussion? Hearing then, can we get roll call, please?
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazella?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Athletic and folk-curricular, can I get a motion to approve C1?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Prisco?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Ferrera. Any discussion? Okay, hearing then, can I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazella?
Yes.
Mr. Boone? Motion carries.
There are not, there's nothing in Facilities. Moving on to Finance. Can I get a motion for E1 through E7, please?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Prisco?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Boone. Any comments or discussion? Hearing then, can I get roll call, Mr. Cruz?
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar? Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazella?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to Governance and Policy. Can I get a motion for F1?
So moved. I'll second.
Moved by Ms. Prisco, second by Ms. Ferrera. Any comments? Hearing then, can we get roll call, please?
Mr. Walker? Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazella?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Opening up to Public Comments. They're seeing no one in the audience. I will close Public Comments. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. 9:15, the meeting is adjourned. The next meeting will be in the Learning Commons.